Good afternoon, call the meeting to order. Today's meeting is being videotaped and livestreamed, for your information. We'll begin the meeting as we always do with the pledge to the flag. Be led by this young man right here, one of our fine young students, and we'll know more about him after the pledge. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, where liberty and justice for all.
So, I am very pleased to introduce everyone to this fine young man, whose name is Devery White. Devery is a first grader at Charles Chipman Elementary School, and you did an amazing job. I could hear you loud and clear the whole time. And he is joined today by Mrs. Perry, who is the principal at Chipman, who actually brought him, because Devery tells me that his mom just sprained her ankle. We have assured him that she's going to be fine. So, we appreciate you being here. Would you like to come up and get your picture taken? This is a certificate for you. And we're drawing some pencils to say thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to turn around here? Mr. Butler's going to take our picture. Do you want to get your picture with Mrs. Perry?
Thank you so much.
4.1, approval of the open session minutes. You have in your packets, draft the work session minutes. 3.2, sorry. The chairman, the real chairman here has to keep me straight. I've got to prove the agenda first. Okay, approval of the agenda, please.
Approve.
Entertaining motion, a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. 3.3, moment of silence. Sadly, we've lost some of our family recently, our school family. Seth Abbey, a 2019 graduate at James M. Bennett High School. Horace Chris Horsey, is retired operations foreman, facility services department. Lucy Satchel Hall, retired teacher at Salisbury Elementary and Prince Street Elementary. And Betty Taylor, retired food service worker, special events assistant at James M. Bennett High, Salisbury Middle, and County Stadium. Take a few moments and have a moment of silence, recognize their loss, and also the family's loss. 3.4, student representatives to the board. Our Mike, myself, my colleagues had the pleasure of having lunch with our student reps today, which was likely the highlight of my day. Very enjoyable speaking with all of them and having lunch with them. At the board table, from James M. Bennett High School, Yong Ju Lee.
Yes.
Hope I pronounced that correctly.
Yes, that was amazing.
Well, I did practice. What's going on at Bennett?
There's a lot of things going on before that. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Yong Ju Lee. I'm the executive board president of the GMB SGA. I'm excited to hear again to report how GMB is and will be driving in every aspect in this year. GMB students and staff members finished the first month of this school year in a safe and enjoyable manner. In September, the GMB SGA and administration worked together to solve some of our student body's concerns. At the end of last year, the SGA surveyed students' concerns, and the parking permit issues issue was by far the most mentioned. Through negotiations with Miss Savage, the cost of yearly parking permits has been reduced to $15, and we have implemented prorating, so students who buy a parking pass later in the year can pay a fair price. For example, students who get their license in spring and start driving then will pay $5 instead of $15. With new parking policies, we are hoping to prevent students from not following school rules by not buying parking permits. Another improvement from last year is that the SGA and school administration are trying to have a monthly meetings to bring out students and staff members' voices. We are hoping to improve the school environment by looking through concerns, suggestions, and requests from other students and staff members. October is a busy month for our students, staff members, and SGA. We are planning for the full blood drive on October 22nd. Signups started yesterday, and many people have already signed up. We are looking forward to another successful blood drive. I'm very excited to announce our homecoming theme, Glow Co. Homecoming is on October 26th, from 7:30 to 10:30 p.m. The homecoming committee co-ters worked hard and bought several new and interesting decorations, such as fog machines, more than 700 glow sticks, glow balloons, and black lights. We are limiting the amount of students allowed in homecoming to 700, and we are planning to open up the gym for basketball, cone hole, spike ball, and card games. Following up homecoming, our school will be filled with spirit from our homecoming spirit week and homecoming paparazzi. Spirit week will begin with Maryland Monday, then Tik Tok Tuesday, Tropical Wednesday, Throwback Thursday, and end with Class Color Friday. On Friday, we will have our paparazzi in the gym. In our paparazzi, the full sports team and cheerleaders will be introduced, and students can participate in many fun events to gain prizes. Certainly, GMB will be united with school spirit in October. Thank you.
Thank you. Maybe we could attend Throwback Thursday, that might fit my colleagues and I. Okay, representing Mardele High School, Tiana Staten. Welcome. What's going on in Mardele?
All right. Good afternoon. At Mardele, we've been caught up in our spirit week festivities today, or no, yesterday we had Movie Star Monday, today was America/Maryland Day, tomorrow is Hippie Day, Thursday is 90's Day, and finally on Friday, everybody will be decked out for Green and Gold Day. On Friday, our girls and boys soccer teams will play in their homecoming games, the first homecoming games at home, and after they hopefully win, there will be our annual homecoming bonfire. The next night, we'll have our 2019 Homecoming Dance, and the theme this year is Met Gala, and it'll give the night a very extravagant flair. And to wrap up the week, we'll crown our 2019 Homecoming King and Queen. And aside from the homecoming festivities, Mardele's been doing its part in the opioid crisis. We've participated in the Go Purple initiative to fight opioid addiction and overdose. To show our support, the student body all wore purple shirts to show that we are unified in the fighting against opioids. And lastly, this year, we have a new dean of students named Mr. Ball, who has found his home at Mardele. Through his school spirit and humor, he's found a way to connect with the students and is officially a warrior. And that's what's been happening at Mardele this week.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
He's been initiated.
Very good, thank you. Maybe I can come to Hippies Wednesday, too. A lot of events that might fit here. So, Parkside High School, Gavin Dennis. What's happening with the Rams?
I'd just like to say thank you to the board for allowing me to discuss some recent events here at Parkside. We actually have had two spirit weeks, one happening this week and one two weeks ago. That was our attendance spirit week, where students are, would actually be able to win prizes just by coming to school, so allowed them to come to school. And then our spirit week this week is for our homecoming, which is named You Got a Friend in Me, which is based on the movie Toy Story. Students this week are having a blast, dressing up. Tomorrow is Woody's Wild West Wednesday, so we dress up like a cowboy, it's pretty cool. And then today was our Pink Piggy Bank Day, where our SGA and I are actually giving away a prize to whoever brings in the most pennies for their class. As well as that, we've, at Parkside, we are also, we'd like to, sorry, we'd like to say how proud of we are to our girls soccer, how they are undefeated right now, and how our band is doing very well, with over half the band that are actually freshmen. And then I've said to the student body, I keep asking questions to see if any concerns, and recently I have received no concerns, so the student body is very content, and I'd just like to say thank you.
Thank you. Nice to know that everyone's happy at Parkside High School. Very good news. So, last but certainly not least, from Y-Hi, Reese Chang. What are the Indians up to?
Hello. Good afternoon. So, we've been working hard for a couple months now, and I'm excited to talk about what we've done. So, we kicked off the year with our freshman orientation, where we put on skits and, you know, things like that about school rules, and we held a student panel for incoming freshmen to talk about, to talk to current Y-Hi students about what happens at Y-Hi. However, we also did some work over the summer to design school pride banners to be hung in the hallways. With the help of our wonderful graphic design teacher, Ms. McCoy, SGA members created eye-catching graphics of the sports offered around Y-Hi. Surrounding each banner are the names of everyone who's on that sports roster written nicely on cut-out Indian heads. More to come, and more recently, we had a Start with Hello Kindness initiative just a couple weeks ago, in an effort to promote community amongst the student body, name tags were distributed. Conversation starters were placed on the cafeteria lunch tables, and students were encouraged to wear particular clothes that they felt represented something unique about them, without breaking the dress code, of course. Another big event making way this year was our annual Relay for Life Festival. Thanks to our awesome faculty members and Ms. Vickers and Ms. Pavlikovic, we had a great turnout, and even received a large amount of help from the Comico JRTC. We look forward to helping raise more money for cancer awareness in the coming year. So, unity is important, and at Y-Hi, we recognize that. So, that's why I'm proud to bring to light the collaboration that occurred between Parkside's marching rams and our very own marching tribe. Although it was a away game for Y-Hi, the band still came out to support when we took on Parkside, resulting in nothing less than a soundtrack to back up the action happening on the field. Although Y-Hi lost the game, leaps and bounds were made towards more unity within the county. Band members were busy this month, as they made the hike down to Glen Avenue Elementary School to play music for kids as they got off school buses during an assembly that happened that day. Y-Hi students loved the experience and were happy to help spread positive energy through the funkadelic tunes of the marching tribe. On the note of band, we're off to a great start this year. Although the scores don't necessarily reflect the work we've put in yet, we continue to grow as individuals and as an ensemble, and building community while we're at it. Expanding on community, the Y-Hi football team has built an incredible family, with credit to Coach Taylor. The team has found a new sense of pride in themselves and each other this season, and have kept spectators on the edges of their seats week after week. As mid-October approaches, homecoming season is among us, and I am very pleased to say that the SGA has decided on a Purple Rain themed homecoming. In coherence with the Why Comico Goes Purple campaign, students will have the option of signing an anti-drug pledge upon purchasing their ticket this week. We will also supply those who sign with a purple Y-Hi Goes Purple wristband. Besides, who doesn't like prints? Prints is awesome. Just a week ago, six juniors and six seniors had the opportunity to visit eight different colleges in the Connecticut and Massachusetts area. The trip spanned four days and was an eye-opening experience for the 12 who were fortunate enough to attend. It was a really good time, according to one of the seniors. Overall, the year is off to a blazing start. We haven't been bogged down too much about any major disciplinary issues or anything of the sort. I'm excited to see where we go this year and to keep everyone informed about the happenings of Y-Hi. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, all four of you noted thanking us for inviting you, but we should be thanking you for coming to our meeting. All of you had very well-thought-out, well-presented reports. Thank you very much. Keeps us well-informed.
I enjoy eating lunch with them.
Yes, those principals should all be proud. We're all very proud of that. Thank you. 3.5, public comments. I don't have any in front of me. Okay, we'll go to 3.6, superintendent's report. Dr. Handlin.
Good afternoon, everyone. A few items I want to just comment briefly on, so far, the successful implementation of our new attendance procedure. Anytime there's change, there are going to be people with questions, and so we have been working with our school administrators to answer those questions. Mostly positive response to the new procedure and the importance of students being in school and holding students accountable for being in school. An interesting note, that at the same time, at last month's state board meeting, they are entertaining a tie to grades with their attendance, the state law, in terms of student attendance. And it will be, if passed, more strict than what we have proposed. They are looking at a student potentially failing, not earning credit at the high school level, if they have, if they miss 5% of their days, either in a semester or a full-year course, of unlawful absences, with no mention of intervention plans and that sort of thing, just mentions of appeals. So, we're keeping a very close eye on that, because obviously, that would mean that we would then have to go back and revise our newly adopted procedure. So, so far, so good on the home front, and again, we'll keep an eye on what's happening at the state level. I want to mention just very briefly, and remind anyone who may be viewing, if you're not already aware, this evening, there are a number of sponsors who are bringing Dr. Brick Kerwin to our community. He will be at Warwick Community College in the Garrary Auditorium from 6:00 to 7:30. For those of you who are not aware, Dr. Kerwin is the former chancellor of the university system of Maryland, and has been chairing the Commission on Innovation and Excellence in Education in Maryland. Since 20, I think the commission was appointed in 2016, so they have been hard at work on recommendations, not only reviewing current funding formulas for public education, but also policies that will clearly impact us, but I do believe are well-aligned with our strategic plan, Imagine 2022. So, if you're interested, the reason that the Community Foundation and the Greater Salisbury Committee, the Eastern Shore Superintendent, School Systems, and other organizations, Salisbury University, Warwick, there are about seven or eight different organizations that have come together to bring him to the community, because we want to make sure that our community is aware of what's happening with the Kerwin Commission. So, I would encourage you to attend, if at all possible. The next two items on my list are brief reports from instruction. I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Briggs. First of all, we'll begin with a summer school report.
All right, thank you, Dr. Handlin. Our summer school programs are led by Mrs. Laura Bounds, which is now Mrs. Laura Jones. She's our coordinator of after-school and summer learning programs, and she's not with us today, because she's home with her two little, brand-new twins, so congratulations to Laura and Rob, and the twins are doing well. So, I will do my best to share her information with you guys today, and possibly Mrs. Susan Jones might have to chime in as director of elementary ed. The first program that we offer for the summer is our Summer Scientist Academy. It is a five-week morning program at three sites throughout the district, and we provide our students with a number of engaging STEM-related activities. You see a couple of the pictures there, I'm not going to read to you, but in addition to those STEM-related activities, there's obviously also learning taking place utilizing ST Math and Legends of Learning to engage those students. Continuing there, we've offered summer scientist programs in the past, and we are obviously always looking to make adjustments, so we always survey the parents and the kids, and we've made some changes for this year, which were found to be beneficial. And in addition to the classroom activities we provide for the kids, we also provide field trip opportunities to visit places around our community as well. The Summer LEAP program is basically an afternoon program that's in conjunction with the Summer Science Academy. Over half of our students took part in the afternoon program as well, and honestly, I had to look up what LEAP stands for. It is Learning in Extended Academic Programs. So, again, where we continue that learning for the afternoon for those kids. And to not take our word for it, we heard from several parents about those, and the best one for me, probably as a parent, is actually the last sentence as you read those, "But he came home tired and happy every day." And we love it when our kids come home both tired and happy. And last, for the elementary one, is actually focusing on that transition year, which is often hard for many of our students, and it's that fifth to sixth grade transition. And this was a four-day-a-week program for six weeks, and although we were only able to serve 76 students, hopefully that, those 76 are now meeting with success and help make for a smooth transition from that elementary school fifth grade to our middle schools throughout the county. So, that was just a quick little overview there of the many summer programs that we have. When it comes back to me in a few minutes, we'll talk about the grant report, where I'll share again. This is all due to some generous grant opportunities that help enable us the opportunity to serve our students in this capacity. So, that is it for this elementary part. We'll now transition to Mr. Dave Harner. He has a long title, I'll actually let him tell you what his actual title is, but he'll share a little bit about our secondary summer school opportunities.
Yeah, I figured that much, but...
We couldn't let that go, so you got to now tell us. We're all waiting with bated breath, what is your title?
Supervisor of Special Programs.
It's not that, Paul.
Just wait for the list of special programs.
Okay, I got you, okay.
He's going to talk about one of them.
Okay, I got it.
Send me an email, Gene.
I will, thank you.
Okay, I'll reply. Good afternoon, everybody. Again, my name is Dave Harner, Supervisor of Special Programs. Everybody always asks me, "What'd you do this summer?" I'm like, "How long do you have?" Summertime is actually one of my busier times of the year. Summer school is not traditional summer school anymore. We served in, cumulatively, in the variety of programs that we offer during the summer, approximately 750 students this summer at James M. Bennett High School. And some of these various programs do include traditional remedial summer school for those middle and high school students who may have failed one or more courses during the academic school year. We dipped just a little bit from our 72% pass rate last year to 69% this year, but still a very high pass rate. Some of the other programs that we offer during the summer are, for our high-achieving students, original credit courses in geometry, chemistry, and algebra 2. And we too, like the elementary, try to continue some of that hands-on projects. These were graphic designs and pillows made in honors geometry class. Honors chemistry class. Students attend, by the way, for an original credit class, students are attending five hours a day, five days a week, for six weeks. It's intense. They have to be dedicated, no doubt. Along with that, we also offer middle school enrichment camps, many around STEM-related topics, but this year, we also included an entrepreneurial program. All of these enrichment camps target students from low-income families, and is free of charge. For several years now, we have hosted Chinese camp exchange program from Shanghai, China. Approximately 50 students every year, along with some teachers, visit and stay with us, attend camp during the week, and stay with host families in the evenings and on weekends. Many of our own Why Comico County students also participate as ambassadors for these students, and of course, many of our families also have children that are school age, and so they get to interact and host these families, or these children, while they are here as well. Later in the summer, these district-level personnel from Shanghai came over to visit us, and got to visit Bennett Middle and Bennett High School, but also Dr. Pavlikovic came and talked about our STEM initiatives in the county, and talked, we talked shop all day. And so, we have an open invitation to visit again and expand our programs. They're very interested in more partnerships. Under the summer school umbrella, we also host an enrichment program for our EL students, focusing on vocabulary development, of course, but also incorporating various experiences, including Mayor Day, who came by to visit, and a field trip to Berlin Police Department, as well as some other experiences as well. This was the second year, and an expanded year, for our summer youth employment, our revamped summer school, our summer youth employment program. Various funding sources allowed us to hire 45 students this year. We partner with other community-based organizations, mostly nonprofits, that host our students and put them to work as, in the kitchen, in the warehouse, Halo, Salvation Army, summer programs, Salisbury University Archives. This young man here on the right worked at Salisbury University Archives, the Halo Warehouse, Salisbury University Kitchen, and various other partnerships around the county. In addition to the work experience, they are also attended one day a week at summer school and took coursework, and were able to receive, if passed, academic credit toward graduation completion. Gear Up is now our sixth year with a Gear Up grant. We hosted many camps at, under the summer school umbrella for this as well. As you can see, various leadership, SAT prep. The Gear Up cohort this year are seniors at Y-Hi, Parkside, and James M. Bennett High New this year, through the Gear Up grant, we partnered with UMES to offer a dual enrollment course at summer school, where the professor came to James M. Bennett and taught Intro to Psychology, and students were able to earn college credit. And for these students, the grant paid for everything. So, that was fantastic. Side note here, we expanded, or extended this partnership with UMES and Salisbury University. They are now both teaching dual enrollment courses under the Evening High School umbrella this fall. And you'll hear a little bit more, but we also have a partnership with Next Gen Scholars and the Maryland Business Roundtable, and they did various summer programs that they're going to talk about next. So, let me bring up and introduce to you Nona and Tashi from the Maryland Business Roundtable.
Dave, before you leave, I have one question.
Yes, Mr. Brown.
On your pass percentage rate for your remedial classes that were taken, it was 69%.
Yes, sir.
What was your rate for your honors? Do you know?
100%.
Good, that's what I was hoping.
As well as the dual enrollment, as well as the 18 students in the dual enrollment
Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having both Tashi and myself. My name is Nona Carroll, and I am the chief strategy officer at the Maryland Business Roundtable for Education. Tashi is actually a program coordinator here in Why Comico County, works for MBRT, but thanks to the wonderful partnership of Dave and of course, Why Comico County Public Schools, works directly with students in Why Comico High. So, just going to give you a little bit of information about the Next Generation Scholars Pro- So just gonna give you a little bit of information about the Next Generation Scholars program that we have been so fortunate to be a part of and be able to bring these services to the students. So a little bit about MBRT. We've been around since 92. Our current board and board chair and co-chair are from Batel and BGE, but we, our membership is, are different employers. And so that is how we primarily receive funding to operate. We have the state grant, Next Generation Scholars, as a partnership with the State Department of Ed. But of course, Wycomico County being that key partnership, one of the key partnerships that we have. This grant program started as a state bill, House Bill for, I'm sorry, 1403, 2016 House Bill, that is called Next Generation Scholars. And as part of that, eight different districts were identified where there were higher farms rates to administer programming in them. And so as part of that, MBRT received funding to actually be in five different districts. So in addition to Wycomico, we have Kent County, Caroline, Dorchester, and Allegheny Counties. So our rural counties is where we focused on, and there is a Tashi in every county, as you can see at the top. And in addition to that, we have been so excited that we've been able to start a student ambassador program. And so those student ambassadors that are at the bottom, Heaven Rodriguez being the ambassador for Wycomico, they give us key insights and voices for the work that we're doing on the ground with, with the different schools throughout the state. So we do operate statewide, but Tashi is gonna share a little bit more about what Next Gen does. And so Next Generation Scholars, we actually started, this is our third year of Next Generation Scholars. We started with seventh through ninth-grade students at both Y Middle and Y High, and we have followed those students essentially to now, where they're now in ninth through 11th grade, and we plan to take them through. The idea is that we wanna make sure that the students are receiving support in partnership with the school counselors, as well as school administrators, to make sure that they are eligible to receive, I'm sorry, guaranteed access funding that is right now being underutilized. And so that is why this current bill is in place, to make sure that we have the students eligible to receive those funds. And so we have developed a framework where each student goes through different tiered activities to make sure they're age-appropriate, and it's all focused on college and career readiness, but ultimately making sure that we are helping them to meet the ABCs. And we have determined these goals in, in listening to Dr. Hanlon with the attendance and, you know, that potential change, we'll make sure that we stay in line there. But our coordinators make sure, when they are meeting with the students, they're constantly looking at what, what their attendance behavior and coursework looks like. And so the supports that we provide help to meet some of these things, as far as engagement and getting tutoring services as needed in the schools. And so one key thing, in Wycomico High, we service about 500 students, and they're all right now, again, at, at Y High. Across the five counties that we serve, it is about 2,000 students in total. So it's not, it's not an easy lift, but we'll have Tashi talk a little bit.
Okay. So basically, in my position with Next Generation, I'm that constant, consistent voice in the school. So as opposed to coming in and somebody giving you that one message, having that conversation, it is my job to kinda have multiple conversations. It's more of an ongoing dialogue. And so one of the things that we do, some of the things that we do is parent engagements. We really try to start with the parent engagements. Unfortunately, that is some of our most difficult, that's one of our most difficult assignments. Unfortunately, sometimes the same, the people who need to be on the same page are unfortunately not on the same page. But that's something that, that we're really pushing for. And you can see the percentages, and where these percentages come from are from multiple surveys that we give our students on Naviance. But as you can see, I mean, the, the parents, they do seem very excited about, you know, having the idea, or like the idea of their students going to, to college. So, let's see here. This is just our by-the-numbers here, and so like Nona was saying, we had over 500 students here in Wycomico, middle school and high school. Those numbers, they fluctuate, you know, a little here and there, because people are moving, newer people coming into the county. So we work pretty closely with the guidance department to see, you know, okay, are these students here, are these students no longer here? But this really neat number is that 75% went to attend college, and 34% of those surveyed said that they would be first-generation students. ABC goals is what we, Nona had mentioned earlier. So that's something that we track throughout the year to, to make sure these students are staying on task. One of the things that we did also, so for the students, 164 of our students out of that over 500 met the ABC goals. And so what we did at the end of the year, we had a little celebration for them. So this is just one of the celebrations, we took them out for a barbecue and like an ice cream social afterwards. They also got certificates. And what we also awarded were, we had Rising Stars, Shining Stars, and our MBRT student ambassador. So we recognized a Rising Star and Shining Star, grades eighth through 10. And actually, I believe Mr. Butler came over once, and he actually interviewed Heaven Rodriguez and spoke to, to her a little bit about, you know, things that, you know, that she'd accomplished through MBRT and Next Generation Scholars. So it was a neat opportunity for her. One of the things, another things that we do is, is try to gain career interest, and we do that through surveys as well. And so you can kinda just, you know, take a glance of that, and that's something that we really push for. And what that leads us into is our career tours, which you'll be able to see here shortly. So college and career visits. So UMES, UMBC, Aberdeen Proving Ground, we took students, a few busloads of students on each of these engagements, or these, these field trips or college visits. And it was just an opportunity for them to go out. We do at least three visits per year. So the students who are really engaged, by the time, you know, if everything works well with this grant and we continue to receive funding, some of these kids are gonna have, you know, visited up to, you know, 12 to 15 colleges through us. It's just always an amazing opportunity. We try to get them out there, get them involved. A lot of the schools will have them participate in hands-on learning activities, which we really push for. So like I said, an amazing opportunity for these young people. Career tours also is something, I'm not sure if that's on here or not, is that, on here? Career tours, yes. So we did this, this is our annual, last year was our first year of doing a career tour. So it's, this is for our 10th grade students, so it'll be for our 10th grade students again this year. And we took 51 sophomores out to six different work sites, Delmarva Power, Dove Point, Salisbury Fire Department, WMD, Whiting Turner, and Salisbury University. Kind of a day-in-the-life, once again, hands-on activity, so these young people can go out there and experience and ask the questions that, that, you know, they're curious about. And as you can see, the numbers, 100% of them agreed that they'd learned the importance of education and how it applies to one's career. We take a lot of surveys. If you have, yeah, we, we survey everything. So, I mean, and, and that's the kind of feedback that we're looking for, and they, they were so engaged. We're hoping this year that we're gonna get those numbers doubled. Now that I'm over at Y High exclusively and have a relationship with the ILT team, we're really looking for a much smoother transition for our second year, and we have no, no doubt that we'll double those numbers. Summer programs as well, as Dave mentioned, these are just some of the things that we partnered with, either Y High or like 4H. So to get these kids and really trying to keep them engaged throughout the summertime, because obviously, we know there's, there's a lot that can get lost educationally over the summer, summertime. And one of the neat things about the 4H camp, where you see the pictures up here, that was at North Point, so that's North Maryland. It wasn't just like a fun thing to where the kids are kinda hanging out and zip-lining and things like that. They also implemented a STEM component to it. So you can see them up there, they kind of like, they went through and they were looking for like non-vertebrae somethings up there when they were, I, I couldn't tell you that above my pay grade is...
Yeah, yeah.
Science is especially...
Yes, sir, absolutely. But, and they, you know, dissected occupus, occupy, whatever. Yeah, it is, that's awesome.
I work here.
But yeah, an amazing experience to kick these young people. So we had about 13, 14 kids, you know, from the eastern shore of Maryland who went up to north and they camped, and they got to experience those things. And it was just an amazing experience, because I actually went up there with them too. And going up there, they had some reservations, you know, about normal kid reservations, you know, mosquitoes and bugs and stuff like that, and sleeping outside, but they actually slept in cabins, not tents. But an amazing experience, and they enjoyed it so much. After the first day, I think we were eating lunch, and the kids were already talking about when we come up here next year. So that was a neat, neat opportunity. We also sent six of what we call our rock star students to the original credit. So we identified six of our top, you know, science students, and we sent them over there to, for them that intensive six-week session over at summer school. MLW was another opportunity that we sent our kids to the, two of our, two Y High students to the Maryland Leadership Workshop at UMBC. Amazing opportunity, they were there for a week, and they had a great time, and I believe a few of their pictures were put on the Wycomico website. And so those are some of the things that, that we're, we're doing and that we offer and that we're, we're gonna continue to, to, to make happen throughout the, throughout the rest of this grant, so.
So just to leave you, obviously, Tashi handed out some information for you. We have a, a one-pager that shows a snapshot of what happened last year, and we're very excited about what we're going to be doing in, in year three, especially since we now have the juniors. We're looking at some soft skills training, as well as some mock interview opportunities. And then the magazine has been our, our legacy, I guess. We've been doing this for about 15 years, and so it is a resource that we provide, not only to our Next Generation Scholar students, but the Gear Up students as well. So we truly treasure this partnership. You guys have been great, and we just, you know, wanna continue to receive feedback and just know how we can improve upon the programming, so.
We have a strong 4H program through the University of Maryland Extension Service here in Wycomico County. Do you work with them?
Brad Hartel. You guys know Brad? Yes, so actually, we were on there, we were on the other field trip up to North Point with Brad, and he actually led that, those STEM-based component things with us up there in North Point. But great, great, great man. Amy Rhodes also worked with her, so yes. And that was a relationship that we built, you know, at the end of last school year, and it worked out so well, we've already started talking about providing more, what else we could do for each other. Yes, ma'am.
Do you ever take any of your day trips, say, up to like the Naval Academy? Show them, or maybe up to...
That's on the, that's on the agenda.
Actually, in February, we were planning to go to the Naval Academy, so yes.
And up Dover, you can show them what goes on up there, Norfolk, they're all within driving distance.
We have not yet looked at that, but it's definitely, we're, we're making sure that we are looking at a range of opportunities for the students, so.
Absolutely.
UMES has some good flight simulators down there.
We, we went there, we visited them the fall of last year. We took, I think, between three counties, we took over...
It was four, four counties.
Four counties, so we took about 200 students total there last year. And once again, they, they took great care of us over there at UMES, and the kids really enjoyed it.
And the one thing that I, that when we, when you talked about those, the Word Cloud, all of those careers, we take that into consideration when we are going to these different locations. So when we are at UMES and we see that students have an interest in a certain career field, we're looking for, what are those programs then that we can make sure that they get exposure to while we're there?
Any other questions, comments? I love this program, and the key to me is the parents engaged. That's the, absolutely, we talk about that all the time. Very, very good program, good presentation, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for being here with us and for everything that you do for our students. Much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harner. Dr. Briggs, a little bit on grants?
For the month of September, we received three grants totaling over $727,000. The majority of this funding was directly from MSDE for our after-school and summer programs, so that we can provide meaningful and engaging activities for our students outside their normal school day. As you've just seen this afternoon, providing opportunities for students during the summer and after-school is a tremendous benefit to our students, so we're extremely grateful for this funding. Thank you.
Awesome.
Very good. And Mr. Butler, extra mile awards.
So as you can see, a lot of great things happening in Wycomico County public schools, and to that end, we also have some great employees. We have 2,400 employees, and each month, we recognize two of those employees who go the extra mile and do something a little bit beyond their scope in their job. So we have two here today. First I want to come down is Charles Hausberg. Charles, come on down. Charles is the Building Service Manager at Mar-Della Middle and High School. He was nominated by Jessica Patton, by the way. And here's what she says. She says, "Chuck makes it a point to greet everyone that he sees in the hallways, goes above and beyond to ensure that he and his team are keeping our school safe and clean. Also, goes out of his way to ensure that work orders are entered in a timely manner and frequently checks in on their status. He also takes immense pride in work and encourages his team to do the same. He's also extremely gracious. When I emailed him over the summer to verify our fire codes and regulations about hanging in the classroom, so we thank you, Mr. Hausberg, for always working diligently to provide staff and students with a safe, clean, and positive environment." And we'd like to invite his principal, Liza Hastings, to come on down and get your picture. Let's give a big hand to Charles Hausberg. Thank you very much. Mar-Della Middle and High School, thank you very much. And Charles, this box goes with that one, but I'll get your replacement. All right. Okay, our next one is, okay, he is here, all right. All right, Garrett McGaughy is a social studies teacher at James M. Bennett High School. Continuously goes the extra mile, is what I'm hearing, in recognizing the positive contributions that others make to the school environment. You can come on down, Garrett. He goes out of his way to let teachers know that he appreciates them and what they do for students. His praise will often catch the recipient off-guard, because most people do not share unsolicited positive feedback in such a sincere and gracious manner. As Ron Clark said during our kickoff celebration back in office August, "Most runners don't look for accolades and call attention to what they do." Well, just because a person doesn't seek recognition for going the extra mile, doesn't mean they shouldn't get it. And that's why Mr. McGaughy, a social studies teacher at James M. Bennett High School, should also experience the happiness and validation that his words have given to so many other teachers. He was nominated by Mark Garlick. And our principal, Crystal Savage, from James M. Bennett, is here as well, we'll have her come on down. But let's give a big hand to Garrett McGaughy. Thank you very much, sir, we appreciate it. Thanks, Crystal.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Hanlon. 4.1 approval of minutes. You had those before you, prior to the meeting, hopefully you had time to read them, commit to memory. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so moved. 5.1 through 5.11, 5.11 are our consent items. Those also you had in front of you before the meeting. Are there questions on the consent items? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve those.
Moved to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor approving the consent items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. 6.1. Our audit firm, TGM Group LLC, Certified Public Accountants, has completed the audit of the Board of Education for the period ended June 30, 2019. The following documents were provided to you in advance for your review. Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the Board of Education of Wycomico County for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2019. Audit Communications, June 30, 2019. Report on Internal Control over Financial Reporting and on Compliance and Other Matters. The Audit Committee reviewed the CAFR with the auditors on September 27, 2019. Upon the superintendent's recommendation, is there a motion the board accept the audit reports as submitted for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2019?
Second.
Mr. Reed?
Good afternoon, Chairman Fitzgerald, Vice Chair Malone, Dr. Hanlon, board members. I just wanted to briefly mention a few points worthy of note on page 13 of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. You'll find that we received an unmodified opinion from our auditors. That's the absolute best you can do in financial statement-wise. The audit report on internal control reported no deficiencies in internal controls and there were no significant audit findings or issues according to the Audit Communications letter. And I stand ready to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions?
Just a comment. You know, I sit on the Audit Committee and seeing all that information and we don't have anything going wrong is a, I guess, pat on the back to you and your staff for doing this because I don't think too many jurisdictions can say they don't have any problems.
Thank you.
So again, from Don Fitzgerald, I appreciate everything you all do. And I know Bree set the groundwork, but keep it going.
Thank you, sir.
I agree. I sit on the same committee. It's outstanding to have that unmodified report.
Thank you.
And I did it then because I sit on that committee as well. It was excellent.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Reed? All right, there's a motion on the floor to approve the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carried.
Thank you.
I'm keeping up now. 6.2. During the September meeting of the Curriculum Council, we reviewed Imagine Learning as an appropriate and evidence-based supplement and support for English language learners. The council unanimously recommended that it move forward to the board for consideration and approval. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve Imagine Learning for first and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Malone?
Good afternoon, Chairman Fitzgerald, Vice Chairman Malone. Dr. Hanlon, it's a pleasure to be here today. This is a software program that will prove a valuable supplement to our English language learners in our elementary schools. We're extremely excited about the prospect as we try very diligently to support their needs. These represent over a thousand students among our student body. And we want to support their needs as they learn English, but also as they increase their content knowledge. And we think this will be a valuable resource. The funding source is Kerwin Funding. And so we're very grateful to the state for that funding source that has allowed us to bring this supplement forward to you this afternoon.
Are there any questions?
I just want to make a comment. As a member of the curriculum committee, one question I asked was, "When will this program be implemented?" And the answer was, "As soon as we approve it." Yes, very much. Let's get this going.
Any other comments or questions?
This is going to be a great resource to have readily available for our students.
It really is.
Any others? Okay, there's a motion on the floor to approve Imagine Learning for first and final reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, carried. Thank you very much for that. Oh, you're staying at the table, right?
I am.
Okay, good. 6.3. During the September meeting of the Curriculum Council, we reviewed The Lions of Little Rock as a supplementary novel for inclusion on the approved listing for fifth grade. The council unanimously recommended that it move forward to the board for consideration for approval. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve The Lions of Little Rock for first reading as a supplementary novel for use in fifth grade?
I so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, back to you.
I am delighted to bring this supplementary novel forward as well. We are always looking for good, current, relevant fiction, good literary text to bring to our students. And we keep an eye toward the diversity of our collection. We love the classics, but we also want to bring a diversity of content to our students as well. And The Lions of Little Rock certainly represent that. So this will be a great addition to our approved list. And I'm so delighted that the Curriculum Council was so enthusiastic about it.
Any questions or comments?
I do want to comment again, being on the curriculum committee. I did read the novel. And I hate to call something that happened in the 50s a period piece, but it is a period piece. And there's a lot of history involved in the book also. And although we had a little disagreement about when we thought the novel should be taught, they convinced me they were right. And so I think the students will enjoy reading the book. I know I certainly did.
We think it will be a very valuable collection. And Mrs. Salsky, so that you know, just because it's on the fifth grade list does not mean that students who are older cannot read it. So your seventh graders may also want to take this book up as well.
Some of the responses as we went through the evaluations were wonderful. It was a cliffhanger. Good morals, great story. Encourages ones to stand up for their beliefs. Strong ties with friendship, detailed characters, different emotions. I love the reviews and the content. I think it's going to be a wonderful asset to the fifth grade students.
Thank you very much.
Any other comments? All right, there's a motion on the floor to approve The Lions of Little Rock for first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we're carried. 6.4. During the September meeting of the Curriculum Council, we reviewed the evaluation and selection of a new textbook series for both French and Spanish instruction in levels one to four. The selection committee recommended the EMC textbook series for both languages. The council unanimously recommended that both series move forward to the board for consideration and approval. Upon the recommendation of the superintendent, is there a motion to approve the EMC textbook series for both French and Spanish?
So moved.
For first reading. And I can't read what's in parentheses, but you can. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Mrs. Malone?
We are delighted to bring this textbook series forward. We had for a couple of years tried diligently to use open source materials and go without a textbook series. And what we found was that what we were asking teachers to do was write a textbook. And they were really struggling to do that. And so it made sense to stop and go look and see what textbook series were out there. This is a very current series. The resources that are provided in addition to the more traditional paper textbook are current. They're relevant. It is proficiency-based. It is aligned to the national standards for foreign language education and language acquisition. And we think it is going to be a huge asset to our language acquisition for students studying both French and Spanish in the middle school and the high school.
Any comments or questions? Okay, a motion on the floor to approve the EMC textbook series for both French and Spanish for first reading. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much for, again, allowing us to highlight our academic programs. And I would remind the public that those for first reading, if you would like to examine a copy of The Lions of Little Rock or our French and Spanish textbook series, those are available for review at our central office, North Gate location.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
6.5. Per Dr. Hanlon's update to the board on September 19, the Interagency Commission on School Construction, the IAC, voted to increase the cost share for eligible construction costs for Wycomico County from 97% to 100%. There was no impact to project priorities or associated project costs from the previously approved document. There was a slight cost shift from local to state for the Priority Two and Three Fiscal Year 2021 CIP projects, which is reflected in the attached revised document for informational purposes. Liesl?
Good afternoon, Vice Chair Malone, Chairman Fitzgerald, Dr. Hanlon, and board members. It's pretty self-explanatory. We were able to make the changes before we submitted to the county executive, which is what you have a copy of in front of you. If there's any specific questions, I'm here to answer them.
I just had one, Liesl. The change is up to, what, 97% or something now?
The change is to 100%.
Oh, 100%, so that, does that mean we will not have to put in anything for school construction?
No, so...
Good question, Mr. Palmer.
It's for eligible, it's for eligible construction costs, which are determined by a series of factors. They start based upon projected enrollments. You multiply square footage per student, that gets you an eligible building size. You multiply that by the state cost per square foot. And that gives you your eligible construction costs, which very bluntly never match up to what the building actually costs to build. So you get 100% of the eligible construction costs. Some examples of items that aren't included as an eligible cost from a state perspective is any off-site work, furniture, equipment, permits, inspections, insurance, architectural and engineering fees, construction management fees, water sewer connection fees, legal costs. And there's a lot of other things to add to that list. So, you know, on a good day, it might be a 60-40 split from a total project perspective. A lot of those elements I talked about a little bit earlier, how you get to the eligible number is changing at the state level. So although we've gone to 100, which is, you know, we'll take every dollar we can possibly get, it could ultimately be a little bit less in the long run because of the changes to the way they're going to be calculating that eligible square footage.
So just to use a simple number, if we had a, say, a hundred million dollar project, we, meaning the county, could probably look forward to paying about 40% of that...
Forty to 50% of that amount, correct.
Of that cost. Okay, thank you.
Total project cost, yes.
Yeah, this is just for information.
That's correct, yep.
But are there any questions or other comments for Mrs. Ashby?
I just want to thank you for all that you do. This is very intense, very complicated, and you absolutely display it to us like a rock star. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Liesl didn't mention that the last two projects they were involved in came in on time and under budget.
Which is amazing.
That's great. You always like to hear that.
I have a good team. It's not just me.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, 6.6 Personnel Matters is just for information. So 7.1, Board Members Reports. Thirty-second maximum. Just joking. We'll start with Mr. Palmer this time.
Thirty seconds?
I'm kidding. I'm kidding. Take all the time you need.
One of those students was talking about something they did during their week at school. They mentioned Woody. Woody is Buzz Lightyear's partner in Toy Story.
Right, western partnering.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify.
We take it.
We went to a conference up in Annapolis with Mabe last week and it was great. One of the areas I enjoyed at the very end, Dr. Salmon opened up the floor for questions. And I gave her a question on what I call magic money, which is funding to the Board of Education that comes from lotteries, gambling, and areas like this. And asked questions about what would happen if this funding kind of went away. And though she didn't have any specific answers, it's something that we could ask Mr. Kerwin tonight over at Warwick Community College at 6 o'clock. So hope to see a lot of people there.
When he asked that question, you could have heard a pin drop out of the 150 people that were in the room listening to him. So I think he kind of set a precedent with that question last week.
I was there. I saw that as well. You made us proud. Mr. Murray?
Yes, I wanted to kind of talk about the community and the schools and how I keep seeing a big increase of working together for our students. And I think that's important. Some of the activities that I've attended, I was, attended the Junior Achievement Kickoff in Ocean City, Educational Foundation, Relay for Life. And of course, one of our schools had a carnival on Saturday. And certainly go out to Prince Street and all the staff there for all their input and all the community support to all these things. Because it does take the importance of our community, the people in it, and our business leaders and our government people as well.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. We're going to go to Ms. Ann at this end of the table.
I've had a busy month. And I did go to the fundraiser for the Education Foundation and the BOE meeting with the county council and the Junior Achievement Breakfast in Ocean City. Along with Dr. Hanlon, we went to the PBIS kickoff program at Chipman Elementary with 200-plus four, five, and six-year-olds having a pep rally celebrating the beginning of school. I never moved from my chair, but Dr. Hanlon and I both said we were exhausted at the end of it, just watching these well-behaved, and I want to say that again, well-behaved four, five, and six-year-olds celebrating their school. It was amazing. The staff there is amazing also. I also attended the curriculum carnival at Prince Street School. I went in about an hour and a half and helped them work the sign-in booth and to greet people and to direct them to, again, to the sign-in booth. But I want to give a couple of shout-outs for that activity. First of all, to the staff at Prince Street School for giving up their Saturday. There were probably about 500 people there. But I also want to mention their faith-based partner, which is Allen Memorial Baptist Church. The members of that church were there. They had a huge grill. They were doing hot dogs, hamburgers. They were doing, giving out snacks and drinks. And these people are being commended for giving up their Saturday and coming to the school to celebrate learning. I went to a field hockey game at Parkside. And I also attended the Mabe Conference. But I also went over to the CTE, over to the horticulture, to visit my friend, Mr. Jerry Kelly, which is one of my favorite things to do because he always tells me what's going on over the greenhouses. The new greenhouse is supposed to arrive on November the 8th. The city of Salisbury has recognized the A-plus Garden Center as a Gold Level Green Business Certification, which I think says a lot for the program. And there is a student from Wycomico Senior High by the name of Yuki... And there is a student from Wycomico Senior High by the name of Yuki, and I apologize on the last name, I think it's Jamaica. She is the only horticulture student representing the state of Maryland, not just Wycomico County, but the state of Maryland, at the global youth institute of the world. She will join 200 other students, and her qualifying research was, quote, "realities and solutions of water scarcity in China." And I think the whole, the program over there needs to be highlighted. I know I had over 30 seconds. I'm sorry.
No, you did well, right at 29 seconds. Mr. Brown?
This morning, I attended the Board of Directors' meeting for the Community Foundation, and I'm very pleased to announce that we approve 14 grants from the Community Foundation to 14 schools in Wycomico County. These grants can range anywhere from $1,500 to $5,000. And it just, again, goes to show the value that the community place on education here in Wycomico County. We, there were actually 31 grants altogether, and as you can see, 14 of them went to Wycomico County. So it's good that you folks are encouraging our teachers and principals to apply for these grants, and when they do a good job of filling out their forms, they're typically going to get approved. And these are programs that teachers and schools are doing to enhance what their programs are doing in the schools. Many of them deal with after-school activities, many of them deal with taking kids on field trips and things of that nature, providing some of the things that kids wouldn't normally get in the regular classroom. So it's a good thing that we were able to get 14 of those. Actually, Bennett Middle, Pi and Hers, Salisbury Middle, and Glen Avenue received two in each one of their schools, so that was great. The other thing that I had an opportunity to attend was the 75th year anniversary banquet of the United Way. And it's good to realize that the Board of Education is number, well, the school system is number four in giving to United Way. That's pretty high when you talk about over 50 companies or organizations, and where you place fourth in those. And then, again, they provide various kinds of activities, which is a Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts, and Horizon, and other opportunities for kids that would not ordinarily be met in the school system. I went to the MAB conference, and the thing that I liked about the MAB conference is that the keynote speaker, Sean McCombe, was one of the typical kind of individuals that we see in the school system, had a horrific home life, very dysfunctional family, but was able to overcome that. And the reason he was able to overcome that, he said, was because of a teacher taking him under his wing and made him the individual that he is. Steve was also the 2014 Merlin Teacher of the Year and went on to be the 2014 National Teacher of the Year. So, again, it just shows the value of a teacher and the life of a student. And on this past Saturday, I attended the NAACP 14th Annual Banquet, as some of the other members here did. I think Tanya met a lot of people that she's not seen for some time, but we enjoyed that. And again, the thing that fascinated me most or intrigued me most was the fact that the keynote speaker, again, was a product of the Wycomico County Public School System. He started at Carlos, started at Beaver Run Elementary School, Y Middle and Y High. Carlos was an upward bound student. He's now gotten his BS degree from University of Merlin Eastern Shore. He's now working on his PhD for the Baltimore University, and he is currently the Management Program Analyst for the United States Federal Government in Washington, DC. So again, you never know the impact that teachers have on kids until you see the fruits of your labors.
Thank you. Mrs. Laird Lewis?
Okay. It has absolutely been a very, very busy month. I, like many other board members, attended multiple events, the Junior Achievement Breakfast in Ocean City. We also attended the United Way luncheon, and it was an extreme honor to be a part of this county, to know that they are giving so much back to the junior achievement, and our level of contribution definitely shows our dedication and support to this organization. I actually did something a little bit different. Amberlee Snyder, for those of you who do not know who she is, she is a paraplegic. She's a professional barrel racer. She was the keynote speaker for the Workman's Compensation Organization in Ocean City last month. Brian and Brittingham, a company out of Laurel, brought her to the Delmar VFW to just be, do a motivational speaking. They sold tickets and they prepared dinner. She is, like I said, a professional barrel racer. She has been a keynote speaker, motivational speaker. There were over 100 little girls and their moms and dads who came to listen to her speak. She also played in the movie Walk, Ride, Rodeo. She did all of her own stunts in the movie. She also has helped write a children's book. So I'm hoping that when I'm asked to be guest reader, I will be able to read that book and wear my shirt and express to some of the students in our local schools that you can absolutely do anything if you put your mind to it. It has been a very quick trip. I flew out on Sunday and went to a leadership seminar in Michigan and did a coaching session with Matt De La Cruz. He is a John, he's from the John Maxwell team. He goes on about leadership and wearing different hats, as Mr. Fitzgerald would say, how to be a leader at home, how to be a leader in the workplace, and how to be a leader in the community. And just by being a part of the Board of Ed, I have seen how we are mastering the leadership here in this county compared to other counties and compared to all of the lessons that we learned while I was away. We are definitely on this right track. We are surpassing some of the goals for leadership in this county, which is wonderful. And Dr. Hamlin, I thank you so much for implementing such an amazing group of individuals to care for our teachers, faculty, staff, and students. And lastly, last week and this week has been a very, very trying week, especially as a mother who has, excuse me, children in the public school systems. And I just want to say that parents, if you are watching and when you choose to listen, we need to parent with a purpose, we need to parent intentionally, we need to be proactive when it comes to social media, we need to find applications, we need to monitor the things that our students are doing. It's a very vulnerable time in society. Our students are very vulnerable in middle and high school. They are thirsting for structure. Teachers, thank you for working with them. Thank you for all the programs that the county has implemented. And parents, if you need help, we have plenty of resources here in this county. Please reach out to us. We want to help you. We want to give you the best of guidance, and we have things here in this county that are implemented that will absolutely make things more beneficial for you, your household, your students, and your child's academics. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well said. I'm going to go next, and then I want to leave my, leave the last board reports to Chairman Fitzgerald. After this meeting, he'll be embarking on some journey with some medical procedures, so I want him to close our meeting this time. I attended some of the same events as my colleagues, the JA Breakfast, the MAB Convention. The MAB is always wonderful because of the networking and the interaction with others, pointers that you pick up, things that you learn about, that's always great. Like Mr. Brown and many of us, which was impressive, we attended the United Way kickoff. The room was filled, and many of those people were with the Board of Ed or the public school system. All of us were there, were there, I mean, as a family. That's the most heartening thing that I see is our participation in the community. Members of the school system are in it, all kinds of different boards and committees, and I see people everywhere. And at that United Way luncheon, that was very apparent, and pointed out by a lot of folks. My boss mentioned how active the school system employees was, how he put it, are in the community, which is wonderful. It shows our caring for the community, which I think is a great thing. So, final board report, Chairman Don Fitzgerald.
Hopefully it's not the last one. First of all, on the record, I want to congratulate Dr. Pavan. Vince, I mean, you mentioned, everybody knows, but I want the public to know that now we have Dr. Vince. And I appreciate everything you do, and I know it's been hard, but I'm glad to see you finish it. You know, American Education Week has been a standard in this community for a number of years. And we're changing it up this year. And I've had one negative comment, so I want to show the public, every day is American Education Week. Just because we're changing the way we have done things over the past, we still want you to come out and visit our schools on your own time. So don't think that we're closing down and not letting people come. American Education Week is still there. But I just want to make sure the public knows of what we're doing and the reason we're doing it. The biggest thing that I see is security. So, again, I want to let people know. As I said here today, I wasn't supposed to be here, but due to a conflict with two doctors kept making their decision when they want to operate on me, it's down, but been moved to the 17th. So, again, hopefully in about a month and a half, I'll be back sitting in this chair or in one next to me. So again, thank you for all your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, yes, and you can come back and sit in this chair, for certain, for certain. So, that concludes board reports. I'll entertain a motion.
I would like to...
Chairman, before you adjourn, I believe you need to make a motion to go back into closed session.
That's what I was getting at.
Mr. Murray?
I would like to make a motion to go back into, in the agenda, to go back into closed session.
Motion to go back into closed session at a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so we're now in closed session?